I'll probably have to go downstairs because there's nobody on the door.
Yes.
I'd like to take care of the door. Yeah, yeah.
It's fine.
Okay.
All rise. Hear ye, hear ye, the Hammond County Commission meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Cutshaw presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you, Harley. Thank you, Harley. Folks, we thank y'all for being here today as we gather together for our regularly scheduled monthly meeting this Thursday, August 22nd, 2024. As we get started, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ahern, please, if you would lead us in prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you, God, just for this time and this presence before you. Lord, I pray that you'll help us to be calm and help us to settle down and to have peace in our hearts as we come before you to help our city and our county and to grow together, Lord. We thank you for this time that we're able to serve together. Lord, we love you. In your sweet name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Walker, would you lead us?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the room? We have everyone here tonight. Thank you for that. Commissioners, as we get started, please be mindful of your microphones so that video/audio recording can take place. Make sure your mics are on if you speak. As we get started, we have several employees years of service to start tonight. I'd like to start. Let me come down. First off, I'd like to call Barry DeWell, please, would you, sir, and James Webb.
James, we're grateful for the county. Now, you're a candidate, Barry, but as a candidate, we're grateful for your commitment to the state. Barry, I'm giving this to you.
Yes. It's my honor and privilege to present this to James. Forty-five years as a sheriff in Seattle County. He's a good man, a good employee, a good friend, and it's my honor to be here tonight with him for this award. And he probably drove this county a hundred times over. A little hot ice fall, if it comes. He's been around a lot of hot temperatures. But I'm very glad to call him my friend, and I know this county is good. Proud to call him Barry Fordham. So, thank you, James.
Next on our list tonight for years of service is Cindy Trent Doty, and unfortunately, she could not be here tonight, but we'd like to call Thomas up, please. On behalf of the county and for Cindy, would you please accept this on behalf of your boss?
Be happy to.
Give a word, please.
Oh, well, she's been with the county for 25 years, with the state for 10 years prior to that, so she's given her life to really to public service, to public works, and she's been proud to do it. And she would really want to be here tonight, but we've got the sick grandchild, and she's being geeked about. Thank you all.
I'd like to call the mayor up, please. Next on our list for years of service, we've got Don Baird with 30 years. Please come forward.
Forty years.
So you started when you were 10?
Exactly. I'm 19 now.
Don's one of these fellows who will do whatever you ask him to do. And he and Tammy have run community corrections for a long time, and maybe had two or three other jobs to you as we go through the process.
You're still going, aren't you?
Exactly.
You're still adding to it.
Next on our list for years of service, we have Register of Deeds Jim Clausen. Would you please come forward, please? Thirty years of service, folks.
We started this a long time ago together, you and me and Don and some others. There's no man better in the world than this man right here. And I'm not the only one who says that. Actually, I've copied it after a lot of people. So Jim's a great man, a great official, and has served the people of Hammond County very well, and we appreciate you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. I've been blessed for 30 years, and I've got a great staff. They're all here, and I just thank the Lord for them. And, you know, fourth quarter of my career, I want to finish strong. I want to finish well.
Last, but certainly not least, let's call up Road Superintendent Barry Poole.
Congratulations on your next step of your career, which is going home and playing with grandbabies. I know about that.
I better get some sleep.
Barry, we appreciate what you've done, your work in representing the people and working for the public. It's not an easy job, and especially about dealing with potholes and garbage cans. That's tough work, but we, it's been great working with you, and we appreciate you very much.
Been my honor and privilege, my honor and privilege. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Walker.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I need to swap chairs with Pam. You'd still have to go out that way. You're right, you would be pushing me out. That'll work. That'll work. Bobby looks like he's down with his father.
Okay, now, we'll move to item two, public comments. Item 2A, comments regarding general and non-agenda items. One second, I did forget to mention this. We have our rules at the rear of the room. If you need a copy of that regarding public comments, we operate by Robert's Rules of Order unless the local rule supersedes. So that said, we will move into item 2A, public comment regarding general and non-agenda items. On our sign-in sheet, we have, first speaker tonight will be Ms. Minard. If I've mispronounced that, please forgive me.
Chris, what did you say her name was? I'm sorry.
Minard is the way I see it, but I'm not sure.
It's Minard.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
You are. Yes, ma'am, you go right ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I would like to say that, you know, I've seen on the news and all this stuff where with the campers that they put up these little tiny cities where these people can live in them and all this stuff. But Hammond County wants to throw them out of their campers. They put up little houses for people that doesn't have a home or whatever, and I think we can do better and let these people live in their campers as long as they're hooked up to all that's sanitary and all that stuff. And, Mr. Walker, I would like to ask you, you made the comment at one of the meetings about a lady with her kids and all this stuff, and that the-
Excuse me, ma'am, you need to direct your comments to the chair, and this is public comments. You can say what you need. Go ahead.
Well, he had said that they couldn't do anything to them and couldn't get them to fix the problem. I thought that's what the health department was for, that if you let your sewer run out on the ground, the health department would find you, that something would be done to stop it. So I would like to have the papers where this was tried to stop for years and couldn't be stopped. You know, I was born, but I wasn't born yesterday. I know the Hammond County government could step in and do something about this, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. That is all on our registered, and anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this commission on non-agenda items.
My name is Lyndon Oe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. Ms. Holden is passing out a sheet that was Ms. Green got from the mayor's office yesterday. And Ms. Green and I were downstairs a moment ago, well, about two hours ago, asking, where is the backup information? This is the, this came from presumably Danny Bell or the road commission. Supposed to be some type of record or memorization of what each road commissioner will have to pay back based on the number of meetings they missed, although the private act said you would not be paid unless you attended a meeting. When we asked for the backup information, Mayor Britton said there was information, a spreadsheet of some kind. He mentioned Danny Bell, and he said that Ms. Green could not have a copy of documents that were sent to him by Danny Bell or whomever. It may have been Tom Hyde. I don't know who sent it. Those are public documents, and the mayor sat downstairs and said, cannot look at these documents. And he said a few other choice things as well. It was not a pleasant discussion by any means. But then he went, when challenged on it, yeah, there may be an error in a document. You get errors, and people come up here and they say, hey, you need to change line two to so-and-so. That doesn't mean it wasn't a public document when it had an error in it. So the mayor was asked to check with the county attorney. He disappeared into his office. Ms. Green and I sat outside for at least 35 minutes, sitting there. Then we waited another 15 or so minutes and asked Wendy Williams to go back and see, does the mayor have an answer? Is Ms. Green going to get the documents or not, or are we just going to be left sitting out here? And finally, we got the answer, no. He didn't have the courtesy to come out and say, no. He was hiding back in his office and, you know, on the phone, this, that, and the other, and then comes out and tells us, no, you can't see. What I would maintain are clearly public documents. We don't know what the attorney said. But this road commission issue, I know I've got 10 seconds. This road commission issue needs to be resolved. It needs to be openly resolved. Quit sending all these texts and messages and emails.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda items? You may do so at this point. You have three minutes. You need to state your name and address.
My name is Wendy Ellis. I was born and raised here. I still have my childhood on here.
Where is that address?
At Ripley Toe Avenue, 598.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I admit when I'm wrong. I was wrong about one thing of how this camper thing started. I thought it was because of you, Mr. Cutshaw. But apparently, I was really wrong about that because none of the campers on your road had gotten any of these letters. So I was blaming you. But the thing of it is, is everybody's been wanting to play the blame game, and this needs to stop. It's happened. These letters has gone out. These people are worried about where they're going to move to, where they're going to live, and it keeps dragging it on. That stress on these families that you don't even have a clue about. We need to stop playing the blame game. We need to come up with a solution because there's no public housing, affordable housing, for two years. It's getting cold. Are you wanting to put these families out when there's snow on the ground? There has been a problem, and I heard that Tommy McKinney said that these people had gotten caught in on. Well, I would hate to think one vindictive person could make one phone call and get me kicked out of my home without even an investigation of it. Now, y'all need to think about that, putting these people out of their homes that is hooked up to utilities. Everything's legal. They have their fire extinguishers like they're supposed to have, their breakout windows that they're supposed to have. Here in this economy, affordable housing has become campers and tiny homes. And y'all need to understand that not everybody can do or be well, because you're talking about people that's on fixed incomes, people that are on oxygen at night. Are you willing to just pick them out on the streets where they can't get that help that they need when they plug in that machine at night? When y'all go to bed, I'd pray and think about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that'd like to address this commission on non-agenda items? Your name and address, please.
Sandra Marshall, 5111 Union Grove Road.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thanks for the workshop, the Saturday meeting. We really appreciate that. But I'm worried you guys are making this too hard on yourself. You can if and but yourself into a mess. It's just a simple solution. Kind of look at them like a single eyed trailer. It don't have to be forever. Just give it a few years. Maybe the economy will get better, blah, blah, blah. But you guys are trying to fix it to where you won't be, I don't know, litigated, whatever. But it's really simple. And when you have to argue the definition of a vacant law, you're wasting a lot of time. It's a very simple thing. And just kind of keep that in mind. We're not expecting you to jump through all these loopholes and make all this oh god, big thing. It's easy. We can all just, very simple. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address.
I'm Trent, 6265 Old Russellville Pike.
Yes, ma'am.
I would be one to speak against the trailers, I mean, the campers. And all you have to do is ride right down Old Russellville Pike. And there's about five of them sitting there. And I understand that they've been served or whatever the case may be, but they're still there. So, and also, while I'm here, I would like to, as I know we're going to look at Cherokee Park, I would like to ask that you look for some kind of speed bumps or something out there. There's a lot of people that walk, and traffic is terrible through there. And if we could just kind of, I know that's a big ask, but if you could just kind of look at it, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that'd like to address this commission?
Gwen Holden, 8150 West Point Drive.
Yes.
Uh, I'm going to say this again. I lived out in Road Junction for almost 50 years. I watched y'all grandfather in junkyards and anything else that you could grandfather in. So if you can grandfather that in, in my community where I lived, you can do it for these people that need these homes. So the best solution, I'd say, is grandfather a man.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that'd like to address this commission? Seeing, okay.
Rhonda Morgan, 2784 North Coffee Road. I'd also like to say thank you for the workshop on Saturday. I think it was a success at some point. I'm just, um, I'm disappointed in all of us. We said that we have such a beautiful town and in such a beautiful area of the United States that we're all just picking each other apart. And where is that going to get us? What's that going to succeed in? I don't, it's not going to. Um, I took a walk through, I live in Road Junction, and I took a walk out Suffer Springs Road the other day, and my, just ride out through there. That's all it'll take you to do is to ride out through there, and that's my neighborhood, and I wish it looked a lot better. There's a lot of junky cars in the yard, and some people don't mow their yards, and, you know, there's several things that needs to be cleaned up in my neighborhood, and I'm sure is the same as any neighborhood that you live in Hammond County. So I think that we would all be a lot better off if we would work at cleaning up our town and making it look pretty instead of just bickering over all of this. Maybe another workshop, maybe, I don't know. I don't have the solutions, sir. But I'm sure amongst all the people here tonight, the 14 of you, surely God can come up with something other than this nonsense that just continues on. It's ridiculous.
Thank you for your comments. Quick redress on this. I just want everyone to know, viewing, the planning commission has this in their court right now. They're working on a solution to bring to this commission. This commission is not taking this idea up yet. We expect that to come from the planning commission, and at that point, yes, it will be in this body for action. But until then, it's my understanding that the date has been removed, that no one is going to be removed from their home. That's my understanding. And also, I think that, you know, there is a talk of a compromise with the proper hookups. So that said, you know, I can't answer. I want to see what the planning commission brings to us and this body does, and then we'll take that up. But thank you for your comments. Let's move on. Item 2B, comments, public comments regarding agenda items. Is there anyone that'd like to address this commission? May do so at this point. Seeing none, let's continue. Item three, we do not have any nominations or appointments tonight. Item four, Chairman Doty, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have item 4A, which is the approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We do have a motion, and we have a second. Now, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
1480A.
This motion passes.
Item 4B would be the approval of the regular calendar items, but we have additions and changes that need to be made, and we'll handle those one at a time. The first addition would be for item 8D, which will be under Public Services Committee, which is a surplus of a service weapon for a retiring Hammond County Sheriff's Department employee.
Okay, this is off the board, commissioners. We have a motion now to add to our calendar, the surplus service weapon for a retiree of the Hammond County Sheriff's Department. We have a motion to present that. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Long. Now, is there any discussion on this item being added to the calendar? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Horn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Nissman?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Okay, this item 48D is now added to our calendar. Commissioner Doty?
Then we have what will be item 8E under Public Services Committee. It is the Tennessee Department of Transportation Railroad Agreement. I think everyone has that at their desk. I put that in the form of a motion that we add that.
We have a motion, folks. This also will be voted on off the board. We can add this to our calendar with a second and a vote. We have a second. Commissioner Horner, is there any discussion on this being added to our regular calendar? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Horn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy How?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Nissman?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
And this motion does pass.
Then we have the deletion of item 7B, which is a bid award on the fire truck for South Hammond County Fire Department. I don't think those bids are finalized as of yet, so we'll be removing that from the calendar. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we do have a motion to remove item 7B, the bid award to the vendor for a grant for fire truck purchase. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Harville.
Any discussion on removing this item for our regular calendar? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion to remove this item, please.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
And that motion does carry.
That takes us back to item four B, which is the approval of the calendar items with the additions and deletions that we just voted on, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We do have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on item four B, regular calendar? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
This motion passes. Oh, you got Thomas?
Yes.
Yes, sir. All right, item five, we have none. We're moving right now to item six, the approval of the consent calendar. I need a motion for that, please.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Doty? And we have a second. Commissioner Harville, is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion passes. Item seven, Finance Committee, Chairman Bobby Hahn, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item seven A, Bid Tabulation, RFID, autonomy today, authorize Mayor Britton to negotiate and execute contract, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
This motion passes.
Item seven C, Proposed Road Paving Projects for the year twenty-four, twenty-five. I make that motion.
One, just a second, please. Just a second. What we need to do?
Do what? Do we need to bunch those up?
I have to, I have to take the vote off the calendar.
Everybody, hold on just a second. All right. Commissioner Hahn, go ahead. You've made the motion now for item seven C, Road Paving.
Yes, sir. And we have a second.
And we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, one nae.
And this motion passes.
Item seven D, Resolution twenty-four, twenty-three, is a resolution to authorize cooperative purchasing with the United States General Services Administration, Cooperative Purchasing Program of the Use and Benefit of All County Departments. And I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion does pass.
Item seven A, Resolution twenty-four, twenty-four, is a resolution to add federal purchasing language into the Hamlin County Government's purchasing policies. And I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion passes.
Item seven F, Opioid Abatement Committee, MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion carries.
Item seven G, one, Fund One-on-One Agriculture and Natural Resources, five thousand, five hundred, seventy-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
This motion carries.
Item seven G two, Fund One Twenty-Eight Drug Use Abatement Fund, one hundred, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
This motion passes.
Item seven G three, Fund One-on-One, General Fund, Fund Balance for SROs, three hundred, seventy thousand, eight hundred, thirty-three dollars, and I do make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Yes, sir. Mr. Neesmith, you're recognized.
This, uh, are we approving this for, from now on, or is this just a one-year deal?
Yes, sir. This would be from now on.
From now on?
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna try to go back to the state to get the state to pay for this when you've got two buildings and they've just been allowing for one like?
That's been worked, looked into.
Well, that's what Bunch said, I mean, oh.
Now, he's, he's looking into it.
Is he looking at Manley and Alpha Two, Bobby?
And Russellville, yes.
Yeah, and all them, okay. Next thing I've got coming up is what happened to the SRO, SRO officers that the city used to furnish us? I don't think the city's got any more.
No, sir, they do not. All of it came under the Sheriff's Department. When the, when the program changed and the state provided the money, this money went to the Sheriff's Department. Therefore, all SROs are under the guidance, Chief, could you correct me, sir? All SROs are under the Sheriff's Department now. And that's all the money that the state provides, the seventy-five thousand dollars per school, goes to the Sheriff's Department. That's why the city does not do that.
Well, I just hope that, that, uh, Mr. Bunch or whoever's doing this will make it aware that the county's having to foot these SROs officers.
Yes, sir. It, it's, it's complicated. I think Superintendent Bunch is looking into, um, you know, what to do. There's something about the identifying number for a school, and he's, he's looking into, if you separate identifying numbers, it could add a principal, a vice-principal, it could do some other things, so.
We might wanna look at our state center, there's a state representative, and see if we can't get some help on this thing. Taxpayer's money, you know, states' turn.
Yeah, there's certain guidelines that each school has to meet. And when we meet those guidelines, then you can get an identifying number. The problem is, is meeting those guidelines for those three schools gonna be less than the grant we would get from the state. So, if it's, you know, you gotta look at the, the balance sheet there.
I know that Russellville, they, they've had, they've got a right. They need to have another one. But, it, it's the numbers on the schools, and we've just got one number for two schools.
Right.
And it's a mile and something apart. That's, I think, needs to really be pushed, re-pushed with the state.
Well, we got, we got, we're looking into it.
Well, we should've looked at this when this first come up, when we decided to get SRO officers last year.
I agree. We didn't. Now, we're doing it. Sorry.
That's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Neesmith. Uh, Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
So, the way I understand you, the city doesn't contribute anything, being that it's under the, the Sheriff's Department now?
That is correct.
This also increase our maintenance?
Now, now, let me back up and say one thing. They helped with the initial start. They, they provided two hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred fifty, okay. So, they did help with this transition for the startup. And this is complicated. We're making it complicated because there, there's identifying numbers. The state only provided seventy-five thousand for the identifying-numbered school. We have three extra buildings in our county, and those buildings were not accounted for because of that identifying number. Therefore, that, that's where this came in with Commissioner Long brought the idea to us to add SRO, and I stand with him. I don't wanna be the one that says no to an SRO in a, in a school that doesn't have one, or a building that doesn't have one. But, uh, to Commissioner Neesmith's point, this county is looking, Superintendent Bunch is looking into what is the best avenue to proceed forward. Whether it be to seek an identifying number for those buildings that do not have an identifying number and seek that fund from the state, or do we, uh, find other ways to come up with this revenue? So, he's looking at that and is supposed to present us with some more ideas.
I am assuming that this is gonna increase our maintenance of effort as well.
Uh, no, ma'am, I don't think so.
It will not.
No, ma'am, I don't think so. That is not included in maintenance of effort.
Well, I would like to congratulate, I would have had brain freeze. I apologize. Forgive me.
That's Commissioner Long.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I'm brain freeze early today for bringing it forward. And being that he brought it forward and he didn't have to have a two-thirds vote, I'd like to see this done more often, that commissioners can fill their duties and bring it and us add it to it, and all commissioners be able to do that. I think it's a fantastic idea.
Oh, you think they don't? So, is that your point?
Well, that was what I was getting at. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hahn also had the idea of adding the other two schools. So, let's move on to Commissioner Doty, you're recognized.
May I say thank you to Commissioner Hahn as well, sir, while I'm at it? Thank you, Commissioner Hahn.
Excuse me? I'm sorry, Bobby is next. Commissioner Hahn, you're recognized.
Just wanted to, I wanna take this time to publicly commend Commissioner Long. And, and he did a lot of legwork after running down the road, doing time runs, and, and this was on his own, and it was outstanding that, I just, Mr. Long, I really appreciate it. I think everyone else does. I have grandchildren in school, so I want them safe. As far as the identifying numbers in the schools, if, if we can get those at a lower cost than a grant, then it makes sense to get them. But if it's, if we have to add more staff, more administrators to get up to that point, it costs more than the grant, then it obviously wouldn't make a lot of sense. But, uh, again, kudos, Commissioner Long.
Amen.
Commissioner Doty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just one thing I want to clarify, and I think I'm right. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. This three hundred and seventy thousand, eight thirty-three is only the first year because this is buying the equipment and as well, and then it'll revert back to approximately seventy-five thousand per SRO for benefits and everything, which will take it to two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five, that's right.
Which will be, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollars or there about less. And as was asked about this going to the maintenance of effort, the Sheriff's Department is going to be paying these officers of the county through the Sheriff's Department. This is not through the school system. So, this will never be part of their maintenance of effort because, uh, this is all gonna be done state through, uh, the Sheriff's Department, or through the county, the Sheriff's Department, and then to the SROs.
Right.
And, um, as I said the other day, and it's been said, um, Commissioner Long, thank you so much for what you've done bringing this up. Um, I've got a child at Russellville, I've got at the primary, I've got grandchildren at the intermediate, so this one really touched home with me. And I do greatly appreciate you putting forth the time and effort you did.
Thank you, sir. And to Commissioner Doty's point, it is two hundred and twenty-five that will be, two hundred and twenty-five thousand that will be recurring, not the three seventy, eight thirty-three. Commissioner Long, you're recognized.
Well, I just wanna thank everybody. It was nothing special that I did. It was just looking at the situation and making sure that we had the children and staff members protected. The reason I wanted to speak was they've already mentioned that it's not, some of it's not reoccurring, so.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion passes unanimously. Mr. Hahn?
That's all I have.
Yes, sir. We'll move into item eight, Public Services Committee Chairman, Mike Richardson, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, item eight A, Resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, a resolution to seek God's hand of mercy and healing on Tennessee. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
This motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item eight B, Surplus Items for Sheriff's Department. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion carries.
Item eight C, Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-six, a resolution to amend the post-construction stormwater runoff regulations from Hamlin County, Tennessee. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Fourteen yeas, one nae.
And this motion does pass.
Item eight D, Surplus Service Weapons for Retiree of Hamlin County Sheriff's Department. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We, we, okay, folks, this is off the board. This will be off the board. We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Doty to surplus the service weapon for retiree Lieutenant Doyle Davis. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's call the roll on this.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
This motion passes.
Item eight E, Tennessee Department of Transportation Railroad Agreement, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Once again, this is off the board. We have a motion on the railroad agreement.
Back it.
We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No.
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas, one.
And this motion does pass.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, we'll now move to item nine, announcements. That concludes our business tonight. Item nine, announcements, uh, September, the committee meetings will be Sep- Monday, September the ninth, here in this courtroom at five PM. Our next commission meeting, September the nineteenth, here in this courtroom at five o'clock. Are all minds clear? Are all minds clear?
Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Commissioner Doty?
Just a quick, uh, note for all those that were here talking about the camper issue, is we do have another workshop scheduled, which will be September the eleventh. It will be in this courtroom, that is a Wednesday. We're trying to accommodate people that can't be here in the mornings, like we did last time, getting some extra, but it'll be, uh, that Wednesday at four-thirty P.M. in this courtroom.
Okay, folks, that's new information, September the eleventh at four-thirty in this courtroom, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that's new tonight, so there you go. Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
I'd like to ask firmly that we, as a county commission, have the opportunity to look at the paperwork regarding the road commission overpayment for the simple fact that's Hamlin County citizens' money. That's not mine, that's not anybody else, that's citizens' money. And overpayments there need to be looked at, but this commission needs to look at them for the sake of the citizens. I've had several phone calls about it, and I have tried to get information, but as Ms. Noe has made quite apparent, I was denied, even though with the public records session that I attended in Nashville, they said that you were entitled to look at it. So I am amazed that it's not available to commissioners.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else?